The regular city council meeting of April 12th is hereby called to order at 6:05 PM. The city clerk staff will provide brief information relating the conduct of the meeting.
Today's meeting is open to the public with limited seating capacity to allow for social distancing. Virtual viewing and participation opportunities are still being provided. All persons who attend the meeting are strongly recommended to wear face mask and or face shield. Please note that in light of AB 361, tonight's meeting is being conducted as a hybrid virtual and in-person meeting. Staff will practice social distancing and will follow public health and safety guidelines. City officials, staff, and members of the public may participate at the city council chambers, subject to social distancing requirements and/or virtually using the Zoom platform. The meeting can be viewed via various platforms as follows. City of Hawaiian Gardens local cable channel, AT&amp;T 99, Frontier 16, Spectrum 36, Zoom, and livestream via the city website at hgcity.org. Thank you.
Thank you. Our city clerk's office will also lead tonight's invocation.
Please bow your heads. Dear heavenly Father, we pray that you guide us and satisfy the needs and need to be met during this meeting. Please provide strength to the council as to make tough decisions. Help us work together and encourage each other to excellence. We ask this in your loving name. Amen.
Thank you. Hope you could please stand up for the flag salute. Thank you. Now with the city clerk's office, please conduct their roll call.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Here.
Councilmember Farfan.
Here.
Councilmember Gomez.
Here.
Mayor Potem Del Rio.
Here.
Mayor Roa.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. We will now move over to public comments. The city clerk's office will provide brief information relating public comments.
There are several ways a member of the public may participate during public comment, both virtually and in person. A member of the public may submit a public comment via written correspondence or by submitting an e-comment through the city's website. Another way to participate is through our Zoom option. A member of the public can virtually attend by logging in Zoom. The meeting ID and passcode is in the agenda packet. Meeting ID number for tonight's meeting is 964-354-4069. Passcode is capital letters H G 1. They may also dial in and call 1-669-900-6833 and use passcode 260613. Lastly, a member of the public may participate in person at the city council chambers. Public comment is now open.
Thank you. This is a time if any members of the public would like to make a public comment.
Hello. Francis Rodriguez, I live on Britton Street. I want to thank the city employees who have been loyal, respectful, and hardworking. Now that cities are reopening, I hope you bring back the employees who were laid off because of COVID. I am upset of the ex-city employee who was investigated by his own union, found to be an embezzler. Not only did he embezzle money that was supposed to go to nonprofits, he also sexually harassed our female city employees. This harassment continued for years, and it's on your watch, Jesse. How would you like it if it was your daughter, your wife, your sister, that he was sexually harassing? How would you like that? It is time to settle this case and get our city back on track. Why are you wasting our tax dollars on attorneys? I bet the attorneys are having fun making all that money off of our little city. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments?
Hello, my name is Linda. I live off of, um, where do I live now? Claretta Avenue. I've lived in the city for a while. I am very excited that we are, uh, everything in the city is starting to open up. I have been part of the adults' sports program, and I was just wondering, now that things are coming back, when is the adult sports going to be coming back? When will softball be starting? Because there are more sports that need to be opened up besides soccer. And for the youth programs, I'm waiting for that as well. And if anybody knows when the, um, the other classes for the kids that used to be here inside of the Robert C. Lee Center, like the flaco Rico and the karate. I'm just wondering when all that's going to start coming back because it's been quite some time and things are opening. So softball is very needed. It's a great time that we get to spend and have like a lot of camaraderie with, um, everybody from the city. And our teams have been family teams. It's not just pulling people from different cities. It is our own residents that are, um, being, um, that are, are, um... Hold on, the word will come. Well, we're getting, yeah, yeah, we're getting, you know, we're getting time out. We're getting time to communicate with everybody else. So I can't think of the word, but you guys know what I'm trying to say. So I'm just waiting for sports to come back. Okay, if we can get that back on track, that'd be great. Thank you.
Good evening. Ronaldo Rodriguez, 21402 Juan Avenue. I recently got hold of a petition going around where, uh, we have, uh, ex-councilmember Myra saying what a wonderful job this individual that is being charged for embezzlement and sexual harassment. It was also, also recommended by Jesse Alvarado, and Ernie Hernandez, our ex-city manager. And I'm disappointed to see some of the signatures on this petition. Many of the city, uh, employees here, I can't believe that these people would sign something like this to get the individual back after all the harm he done to the city. In fact, we also know that Mr. Ernie Hernandez did a lot of harm to the city by overcharging us, uh, giving him a housing allowance. What other cities give their managers housing allowance? Ernesto, forget it. There will be no housing allowances for you. But anyway, uh, this, this petition and the signatures that I see, all these employees, mostly they're from Public Works and Transportation. And, uh, I can't believe that they would sell their souls to the devil just to get whatever they, uh, this individual promised them. So I want the community to be aware of what's happening here. If we have people like this signing something like this, this city is never going to change. Oh, anyway, thank you.
If there are no other public comments, we can keep it open for Zoom.
If anyone in Zoom would like to speak, please use the raise hand function or call in now.
We will now close public comments. We do not have any proclamations or certificates tonight. We do not have a presentation. We do not have any public hearings, so we will move over to consent calendar. Does any council member want to pull any items on the agenda for separate discussion? Then may I get a motion to approve the consent calendar in its entirety?
I make a motion to approve the consent calendar in its entirety.
I'll second that motion.
Can I get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Alvarado.
Yes.
Councilmember Farfan.
Yes.
Councilmember Gomez.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Del Rio.
Yes.
Mayor Roa.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Now we move over to discussion items. Discussion item C1, recommendation to adopt resolution number 017-2022, approving the adoption of memorandum of understanding between the City of Hawaiian Gardens and the American Federation of the State, County, and Municipal Employees, ASME Local 36, Rank and File Unit. Can we please get a staff report?
Sure. Honorable Mayor and members of the city council, um, as you know, we did have the opportunity to, uh, negotiate, uh, a two-year extension, which, uh, contracts expired December 31st, uh, of this past year, 2021. I am happy to report that with your guidance and direction, we were successful in reaching a tentative agreement, pending, obviously, city council approval. Just to touch on some of the items that we were able to work on or agree to is, uh... Give me one second. Yeah, so the term of the agreement, um, will be through December 31st, 2023. So January 1st, uh, 2021 through December 31st, 2023. The city agreed to partake and take some additional steps in terms of calling the laid-off employees back to work. We will be, uh, sending two certified, or two letters. One, the regular mail, the other certified mail. We're also going to email them and text message them. Some of the laid-off staff have been laid off for close to two years. So we want to make sure we work with the union and, and do our due diligence to try and, uh, get ahold of, of those individuals. So there's a process in which we're going to follow to call them back. I am happy to report that, um, we did hire back, I believe, seven, Steve, that responded. We have exhausted, um, what we agreed, uh, that we were going to do in reference to the remaining six. So we're still waiting to hear back, uh, from them, which I believe the deadline is up and coming very shortly. Uh, if, if they do not respond, then that means that we're able, as a city, to go out and hire folks that we may need to, uh, take on whatever positions are available. So there is a tiered, uh, recall timeframes that we agreed to previously. Any and all recalled employees were entitled to be called back, uh, within a 36-month period. We did work on a schedule, um, that basically, um, allows us a little more flexibility. So for example, employees who, who were employed by the city, uh, for one year or less would have six months to be recalled back. Employees with three years or less would have 18 months to be recalled. And employees with three years or more would have 36 months to be recalled. So we were able to get some flexibility in terms of the recall language there. We also tentatively agreed on, currently, there's language in, in the MOU that prohibits the city from hiring any consultants during a layoff. So we were able to secure some language that would enable us to hire, uh, special, more specialized work, uh, work that cannot be normally performed by our employees. So we will be able to hire, you know, certain firms that would perform certain functions that our staff cannot do. In terms of raises, uh, we agreed to a 3% COLA, uh, retroactive to July 1st, 2020. And then another 3% COLA, which, uh, would become effective in July 1st of this year. So another, uh, takeaway would be the, the unions both agreed to take one holiday, uh, from the contract, uh, for full-time employees. Currently, they, they have 16 paid holidays. So we were able to cap that at 15. And it appears Rank and File, both Rank and File and Management, agreed to give up, uh, the Lincoln, uh, Lincoln's birthday holiday. And then just the continuance of all other terms and conditions set forth in the expired memorandum of understanding. Uh, you should all, you should have received, uh, an additional amendment. And it's highlighted in yellow. There's some language there that, um, the union requested that we inadvertently left out. One's in reference to the payout of the 3% COLA. Basically, it summarizes a, a schedule in which, you know, they're going to receive payment and so forth and so on. And that would be the change to section five of the resolution. Uh, the second item is the tiered layoff language, recall language. Uh, that would only apply for any employees that were hired after January 1st, 2022. And that language would be incorporated into section three. And then under section six, they both were able to identify the holidays. So full-timers are giving up Lincoln's birthday. And one of the things I forgot to mention previously is part-timers will get, uh, an additional holiday. They, they will now have, I believe, five or six holidays, a total of six holidays, and, and they will get New Year's Day as, as a paid holiday.
And then, Mr. City Manager, if I may, just for the members of the public and any of those watching, watching at home, the, the additional language here, i- it's really just clarification. Um, there's nothing substantive being changed. Rather, it's just, you know, some of the, I don't want to say gaps, but it, it basically just provides more specificity to what was provided to, to you all in the, in the agenda packet.
Thank you. Yeah, it'd be more of that to have, answer any questions any of you may have.
I don't have any questions.
I don't have any questions either. I know as, as a team, we collectively worked on this, um, in order to get this done. And I'm happy that we're at this point where all parties came to an agreement. And I think this is a mutual beneficial agreement. And we're just happy, I think, at the end of the day, to be able to hire back, uh, the vast majority of those employees that want to come back and work for the community. But more importantly, um, we're looking forward to opening back up and establishing those programs that the community is so used to having. So I just want to thank my colleagues for working together, along with city administrator, and getting this done.
Thanks, Hugh. Thank you, Councilmember Farfan. I want to echo those words. No additional comments or questions. Just want to say that, um, this is hopefully going to prevent us from entering into a full-on negotiation, which, as we know, can take a lot of time and effort. And we did want to recognize, you know, the efforts of the employees throughout the pandemic. We do know that, um, those were, that remain on board have been working really, really hard. We, we've asked for them to step up into roles that were, um, they weren't doing prior to the pandemic. Um, but also just want to, um, the union to understand that some of the cuts and the things, the decisions that were, that were made, um, were, were not easy. It was, um, what we thought was the best situation at the moment. And by us approving this hopefully tonight, um, we want to demonstrate that we want to continue to work with the union and hopefully open up and continue to provide the services that we were providing prior to pandemic levels. So with that, did you, no? Perfect. With that, I entertain another motion. I entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve that resolution.
And so, and I just want to be sure that the motion to approve is based off of the additional language provided. Um, and, and just for the record, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I think it's best to read it into the record, which I can do right now. Or Councilmember Alvarado can do that as well, whatever he prefers.
I can, I can read it.
Okay.
Perfect. So, um, I'm asking for a motion to approve, recommendation, um, to adopt resolution number 017-2022, approving the adoption of memorandum of understanding MOU between the City of Hawaiian Gardens and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, ASME Local 36, Rank and File Unit. And that includes amendment C1, which is the COLA payout additional language, the tier layoff recall language, additional language, and the holidays which were discussed by our city manager.
So that is my motion. Second.
Can we get a roll call? Thank you, Mr. Gomez.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Yes.
Councilmember Farfan.
Yes.
Councilmember Gomez.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Del Rio.
Yes.
Mayor Roa.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Now we will go to discussion item C2, recommendation to adopt resolution number dash dot 018-2022, approving the adoption of memorandum of understanding MOU between the City of Hawaiian Gardens and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Local 36, Management Union. And if we could please have a staff report.
Sure. Uh, I must, I must say that, uh, many of the terms were very similar to Rank and Files. There was a few, a few, uh, items that were a little, a bit different. But basically, uh, there's a 3% COLA going back to July 1st, 2020, and an additional COLA July 1st, 2022. The management chapter did identify President Lincoln's birthday as the, the holiday that they would give up, and they capped, uh, the total of holidays to 15. Recall, the, the, the timeframes, they agreed to the same as Rank and File did. The contracting of, or hiring of contractors during the layoff was, was also agreed to by the management. And then, uh, the term, the two-year term is identical to what Rank and File offered. So that summarizes, uh, the management unit contract. I do, I do want to say that I, I think it's important that I myself, um, thank and give credit to both boards because, uh, it was a lengthy process. They have been through, through some pretty challenging times here and, and rightfully so. And council can attest to it, you know, from day one, uh, you know, it was, it was understanding and, and my position and even council's understanding that, you know, the employees were entitled to some type of raise. They had not been, or they hadn't received any raises for a couple of years, and there was some pretty tough times. So, um, I want to thank both units and, um, thank the mayor and the council for all the support as well in getting this done.
Do you have any questions with regards to management MOU?
I don't.
Then may I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Alvarado.
Yes.
Councilmember Farfan.
Yes.
Councilmember Gomez.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Del Rio.
Yes.
Mayor Roa.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Now we, um, our last discussion item for tonight, recommendation to receive and file presentation to the city council on citywide traffic speeding concern, neighborhood traffic calming strategies. Can we get a staff report?
Eunice, give, give me one quick second. So, so I did want to say that, uh, this item is being brought forth by a request by a couple council members who, who were interested in us, um, making sure we, we did our due diligence in, in exploring any potential options that we had as a community to, to assist with numerous issues involving traffic, speeding, and so forth. So I asked our, our city engineer to go ahead and prepare a presentation. He has quite a bit of information here. It's, it's very helpful, insightful. And, um, obviously, there'll be an opportunity for any questions at the conclusion of his presentation.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor and, uh, council members, it is a pleasure to present to you this, uh, short presentation to introduce some of the strategies that are in the toolbox of a traffic engineer to improve traffic safety, call traffic calming throughout the city and wherever there is a concern. So the, the purpose of this presentation was to give you some of the ideas of traffic calming and also to hear about specific concerns that you have on a specific location that so that we can develop a project and put together a funding application to get funded and then resolve the problem. So the first, uh... I'm trying to see how it works. Okay. The term traffic calming, I'm, I'm sure you all know about all these things, but this is a kind of recap so that we can, um, all have the same platform of knowledge about, uh, what we mean by traffic calming and what are the strategies available to address those, uh, problems, traffic speeding, and so forth. So traffic calming means a slow, slowing traffic speed. Often time, especially on residential streets, we see people cutting through and driving through at whatever speed without regards to the characteristics of the streets, safety concerns. And, uh, therefore, the, with traffic calming, we can reduce the negative effects of motor vehicle use. What are the negative effects? As I mentioned, the safety, crashes, and so forth. And with traffic calming, we can alter driver behavior. They will be more careful in driving, in paying attention to pedestrians, children, and so forth. And it also improves conditions of non-motorized street users, which are pedestrians, bicyclists, skateboarders, and all these kinds. Next. Next slide, please. Okay. With traffic calming, the benefits include reduced traffic speed, of course. By doing, uh, reduction in speed, we can reduce the two types of crashes, coherent and side swipe. And it improves, uh, speed limit compliance. With these measures, we can decrease crash severity and improve safety of pedestrians and bicyclists. And increase pedestrian and bicyclist activity. pedestrian and bicyclist activity means active transportation, which in other words promotes health and physical activity of all residents. Next slide, please. These measures can be implemented anywhere, at any intersections where we see the problems, and on street segments, in mid-block locations, in the entire neighborhood or citywide, we can implement some of the measures. Next slide, please. So I will, I will talk about the physical design. What can we do on the street by doing certain things, by redesigning the street segments or intersections? So first term I have is called road diets, basically narrowing the street width travel lanes so that people don't have an freedom of doing whatever they can do, whatever speed they can travel with. They will be restricted if we do road dieting. It slows the speed and provides, uh, also, by narrowing the lanes, we can have additional width of the state to use as a bicycle lane or provide a buffer between parking and vehicles, travel lanes, and also increase on-state parking. So road dieting has double benefit. Next, we have speed humps. You can put, uh, in a, in a mid-block locations, speed humps, so that people will be required, will be forced to slow down and climb over the hump. So that is a very effective way of reducing vehicle speed. But we cannot do it on all location, all streets. We have to have a adopted city policy that requires residents agreement, signatures, at least seventy-five percent of residents in that street will agree to put a speed bump because of, has some negative effects also. It's, uh, one of the effects is, uh, noise. Everybody is slowing down and speeding up. Secondly, it reduces the reaction time of police vehicles, emergency vehicles, and fire department vehicles. They all also have to slow down and then move, even in emergency cases. So therefore, speed humps is a very effective method, but we have to be very careful in understanding the situation and applicability of speed humps on certain streets. Next, uh, we have a speed tables. Speed tables is also like a speed bumps, but it's flatter. It's not like everybody will slow down and, and move, climb over, but at the, at the same time, it reduces, uh, speed to climb over that speed table. And we, and we have raised intersection, the entire intersection can be raised little bit so that the driver will see something, some obstruction in front before going over the intersections. So that is one of the options. Another, another option is a median barrier so that, uh, when a street crosses, we may not provide an option to go across without stopping or without, uh, reducing speed. They have to make either right, right turn or left turn to travel. So that's reduces speed also. And we have a, what is called porch of islands. So the same thing as median barrier. It's a little island that will make drivers to make either left turn or right turn by reducing the speed. When we make turns, we, of course, reduce the speed, and, uh, our objective will be accomplished. Next slide, please. And these are some traffic operational and control devices that can be employed. We can make a street one-way streets. If we see serious problem, we can reduce the traffic volume, and, uh, it will, uh, have positive effect, but it has also, uh, disadvantages that, uh, some people will have to travel more to come to their residences. But it is also a good options regardless. And we can put some, uh, mid-block speed limit signs. So whenever, whenever there is a sign that people, drivers will look at and they will understand that it is a reduced speed sign or whatever signs is posted there. And, um, in residential streets, we have a primer face signs that is at twenty-five miles per hour, in alleys fifteen miles per hour, school zone twenty-five miles per hour. Besides that, we have the posted speed limit, which is based on traffic survey. Every five years, uh, we do, uh, have, have to have a survey of this, uh, various mid-block locations, and based on the survey's results, the speed limit signs are posted. So if we see a problem, we might do a traffic speed survey to see what speed people are driving at. And based on that, we can either reduce the speed limit existing state limit to a lower, uh, five miles less than what it is existing, and post a new speed limit signs. And other option is, uh, can put a neighborhood watch signs. That means, uh, the neighbors will have a way of, uh, reporting to police department or if they see something, some, some drivers driving at a increased speed. Next slide, please. So I talked about developing a project to improve the traffic safety conditions, and certain, uh, funding requirement is to have a study done on these locations. So we have, as I said, uh, in last city council meeting, I presented this LRSP report, uh, which we have completed in the city. And, uh, that report listed about, um, seventeen location, intersection locations. By the way, these are not, uh, really residential streets, locations, where we see the traffic, uh, calming needs or speeding problems. These locations are in, listed in terms of, uh, number of crashes in last five years. Number one is Carson Street and Pioneer Boulevard. Seventy crashes is a lot. So this list will allow us to go for funding request to get the state, uh, fund, federal funds. And when we have the funds, we can have some matching requirement from the city and develop the project and resolve the problems. So next slide.
So before you move on, um, something that just comes up is one of the common denominators on that, on that prior list is Carson Street. But Carson Street is a main street. So a lot of the things that you mentioned today would not be applicable.
Not typically applicable, yes.
Okay. So are there options for main streets?
Main street options are signalization, improve the visibility of vehicle heads, and also reducing the speed limit across the corridor. There are several other improvements listed. By the way, we have a, uh, ongoing project to improve the intersections of Carson Street and also Norwalk Boulevard, some of the intersections. We have two projects we've been, uh, putting together and got funded. So, uh, construction activities on those two projects will start very soon. And also there are traffic, uh, signal synchronization that can be implemented, and we have a pro, uh, project to do synchronization along Carson Street. Uh, that's basically the end of my, my presentation. I would like to have some questions that you have, and also if you need any clarification on any of these items.
Have any questions?
Well, first I want to thank you for this presentation. For me, uh, uh, safety is my priority. And, um, I know that you mentioned grants for the, is it only for the major intersections? Cause I know that there's a lot of speeding. I know from the top of my head on two twenty-six and two twenty-first is there. Like a type of pilot program that we can do a study in that area to see if, um, we can do any like speed bumps or any calming measures in those particular areas?
Thank you. Uh, no, we also have funding opportunity to improve the conditions of , uh, non-major states, residential states and so forth. And then, of course, we have to do a study to develop the project and find appropriate solutions and then go for funding.
Right. So, so if I may, uh, Councilmember Del, or Mayor Protem Del Rio, to answer your question, yes. There isn't, there, there are grants available, but there's a certain, there's, there are certain things that need to take place, like Eunice mentioned, before we start applying for them. And before we're awarded, it's like, you know, you have to have certain criteria that we need to meet. But we can definitely look or start looking at some of the prob, problem areas, like you mentioned, two twenty-first and two twenty-sixth street. Those are definitely two, two areas of concern for us as well. So.
Thank you.
Yeah. So it seems like, um, that's probably the main arteries to the city outside of, you know, our main streets or boulevards. So Civic Center, uh, two twenty-first, two twenty-sixth, which are the streets that are not, they're in the residential area, but not technically like residential streets. So those seem to be, um, the ones where the, where the most problems occur.
Yes. We know some of the problems and concerns that is coming out from the residents. And based on those, uh, we, we are looking at the locations and see what our studies have been done. Some of the studies have been done. We have available in, in the reports, like traffic engineering and traffic survey is one thing that determines the speed limit signs, speed limit of streets, has to be done every five years. So last one was done, uh, two thousand eighteen. That sets all the speed limit signs and, and validate the speed limit. And in some cases, it reduces the speed limit, and some, in some cases, it can increase also. So we have a few studies that addresses some of these problems. So when we develop a project, we can take care of, take a consideration of those, um, studies results and, um, and maybe update our, our data to justify the project.
I'm not sure what they're called, but, um, Civic Center has, which I'm pretty sure two twenty-six doesn't, but Civic Center does through, um, in certain locations has dips. And so those seem to slow down the cars, um, uh, at least substantially, because if you fly through that intersection, I mean, you're going to destroy the bottom of your car. But I don't think that they have that in, on two twenty-six. Is that, are those options or are those, um, more difficult to create?
Uh, you're talking about dip versus hump. Yes. So it depends on the characteristics of the state, whether it's local or residential. Uh, on a major state, you cannot have. And also the drainage requirement dictates, uh, those, uh, strategies. So it's very, uh, location specific, I would say.
So, yeah, absolutely. So I know for a fact that, you know, speeding in our city has been a tremendous problem for a long time. A lot of complaints, cars nowadays, they're, uh, you know, young adults buy these fast cars and they're just like, love the power and speed, but very dangerous. And, uh, so, yeah, we have complaints left and right. I mean, almost all streets, uh, somehow people are speeding. And I know that, um, at one point in time, my council, uh, member, Victor Farfan, he, he was, uh, they were crying about schools. I think schools area is very, especially during school hours, uh, it's very important and priority because we have kids. So I see kids going to school by themselves, uh, very, very little, very young. So that definitely worries me because, you know, they're not being driven by a parent or walked by a parent. They're just like on their own. So, uh, I definitely like to see, I know you mentioned different, different ways or methods of slowing down speed, but I'd like to maybe potentially have a visual of the different examples and areas. I know the, the humps and I know the dips. I'm not clear on the other ones you mentioned. They definitely like to see that. And also, you know, what kind of grants we can find for that, if it's doable, and if not, what kind of funding, uh, we, it is required from the city to make that happen. But at the same time, we need to consider, uh, we can't flood the city with bumps and humps and all these things because I, I know in the fact, we had another study where they talk about, you know, instead of emergencies, people are maybe having a heart attack, a stroke, and we need to get an ambulance fast enough. And we, people are in that kind of situation, you know, every second matter, every minute matters. And so definitely, is that something that need, also need to consider? Uh, the fire trucks are so big and heavy that they, you know, they can't go fast over those bumps. So, you know, we, we definitely want to make improvements, uh, considering all aspects of scenarios, the schools are really definitely priority, uh, understanding that all streets and the whole city, they're speeding and it's unfortunately, but, uh, it's, yeah, it's out of hand. But I think we, we got to start where it's the most needed and also the same time where it's cost efficient. So that's my thought.
Thank you. And that's why I mentioned all the other solutions. Bumps, I would say the last resort to reduce the speed, but there is a lot of other solution. Not one or two. It can be a combination of strategies that can be applicable to certain locations. And, um, as you mentioned, the speed humps can also have a lot of disadvantages.
Yeah. Maybe in the future, have a visual, those different, uh, scenarios, examples that way. We have, at least have an idea, will be clear of what we're talking about. But, yeah, absolutely. So we need to explore all the different options. So thank you.
Thanks.
Well, let's see. I'd be curious to find out if, um, how effective are the, um, the little islands that they put in some of the communities? Like I've seen them in Long Beach, where you can't just drive straight. You kind of have to swerve maybe right and then back onto the road.
Right. That, that is very effective. There are also studies going on towards that kind of solutions. Um, for safety improvement, any project that we have, we implement, we are required to do a before and after studies. Like at least six months before, what is the conditions? And six months after the project is completed, we have to get the study to see the, the comparison is if it really achieved the objective and by how much. So every project of this kind will have that kind of studies.
Yeah. Like I said, I'd be interested in those because I think it also eliminates the, um, burnouts and the donuts in the intersections, just because you have something in the middle that prevents the car from actually rotating. that prevents the car from actually rotating full circle. I've seen those in Long Beach, I've seen them in other cities. And I think the biggest would probably just to be if there's minimum requirements so that you're, you have clearance on, on all four angles. But I've, I've seen them in smaller cities, too.
So you're probably talking about traffic circles or roundabout, something in the middle and everybody has to make the right turn, but move right. It has been effect, been proven very effective, but also cost a little more than other options. And you have to have a middle portion large enough to provide your travel lanes. And at the same time, it cannot be too small. So a lot of location you will see is wide enough for donors, but not enough for traffic circles. So again, we have to study and look at those locations to see if we can implement those.
Perfect. Thank you.
Once the study is conducted, you are able to provide to us what measures are more effective, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, and just for-
Also, I know in our previous meeting, Council Farfan, Councilmember Farfan mentioned the, and also Alvarado mentioned about the firefighters not able to get to the homes on time. Is there a way we can work together with them so that they can have an input? I mean, we don't want to do something that's going to stop them from getting to a place that's going to take them longer, but maybe they can educate the community as well. We can work together so that they can put an input on why is it important to have them or which measures are more effective?
Every project of this kind that we go for funding, the funding source has a requirement that we get public input. So we've been, in different cities, we have been doing these things, community outreach meetings, a park or a location where people can keep, put their input. So when we are in the middle of the project, we go with the drawings, with the layouts and show the people that this is what we're going to do, we think it will be effective, but we also like to have your input. At the same time, fire department, school districts are also involved in the preliminary design process so that we can get their input. Yes, it is a requirement, if we go for funding, the, they would like to see the community out, input on, in these things and the suggestions. So it is a inherent process for this kind of projects.
Thank you.
If I care, in previous years, I've spoken with firemen about the issues that they might have. And one of the things that they always brought up was sometimes they just have troubles finding the house because the, you know, addresses might be painted on the curbs, but the cars are parked there and they can't, they can't see the curves. So they, they would like, of course, you know, to do an advertisement of some type to, to promote, making your address visible on your house so that they can find it and get there. And I think that's, that's a big issue for them.
For fire department, yes, yes. And then, of course, you can have a program or something that to repaint the curb address every year or every two years. Different cities has that program, a voluntary contribution from the residences. And that provides the cost of painting or repainting the curb addresses. And I forgot to mention that for a fire department, there are some kind of speed humps that has a gap in the middle or like one of the wheels can, can go through, not the other. So regular cars like will have a six, six-foot wheelbase. If we put a gap in the six-foot interval that the cars can go through, but no, for fire trucks, it is wider. So that on the speed humps, there will be a gap, one or two, so that fire vehicles can move without stopping. That, that kind of speed humps are also available. But again, we have to see the locations where we can implement these things.
I just want to say, it's nice to see that we're making some progress here. I know each of my colleagues are excited and they, they want to see something take place. And I think especially within the community itself because, and talking to the residents, that's their biggest concern. You know, the speeding cars. And as my colleagues mentioned, you know, it's either, you know, the safety of residents, children walking to school, whatever it may be. And I think ultimately, that's just our goal, is to make it a safer community for everyone. And so that, you know, we, we're not, you know, in the situation, unfortunately, someone, you know, young child gets hit or anyone gets hit. And so we're just trying to be proactive. And so thank you for putting this presentation together. And I look forward to hopefully hearing more about these potential grants and making it happen. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Definitely thank you for putting it together. One thing that we, I would like to see is for us to, if there are certain areas that are, are identified, for us to create some type of master plan where, you know, because I, I assume that it would require a combination of many different measures. Not all the streets are the same and, and, and so it would be beneficial for us if we put together some type of master plan where we could potentially, you know, maybe target a few areas of the community and then moving forward, identify others that can be addressed. Just also thinking of the cost associated with a lot of the speed bumps or whatever it is that can potentially be implemented.
Sure. We are looking at the specific locations to, as you said, to put, look at a list and prioritize based on the need and also the fund requirements. We will come up with at least sometime in the future.
Thank you. So if there are no other questions, I think this item, we're just basically approving the staff report. Is that correct? Or the-
Correct, yeah, it's just a receive and file.
So can I get a motion to receive and file?
I'll make a motion to receive and file.
Can I second that?
Can we get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Alvarado?
Yes.
Councilmember Farfan?
Yes.
Councilmember Gomez?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Del Rio?
Yes.
Mayor Roa?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We will now move to committee reports. Are there any committee reports? Is there any new business? Do we have any oral staff reports? Steve?
Yes, Mayor and members of the city council, a few updates for you. This past weekend, we started the registration process for our youth and mini sports camps. I know there was a comment earlier this evening regarding that matter. So we are currently taking registration through the end of April and the camps will take place May through July. Once again, this is for youth and mini sports camps. And the community can get more information by calling Recreation. And we are working to get the information on our social media platforms as well. In addition, this Saturday is our annual Easter egg hunt. It'll take place on April sixteenth at Ferguson Elementary School out in the field area from 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM. That's this Saturday. And also just to update you on the additional questions presented earlier regarding adult sports. So yes, we have been providing soccer leagues for some time now. In the next fiscal cycle, as of July first, that is when we funded to add the adult softball and baseball leagues. As you know, we've worked to phase some of our programs and staffing levels back to fruition. So those activities will be made available as of July first.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you for the update. Do we have any city attorney reports?
No, Mr. Mayor.
So then we will, any oral council reports? Do you guys have any?
I have, not a report, but I do have a comment. So I was able to attend the Independent Cities Association training. It was really a great training and very informative. I was able to learn, learn the, the different issues that is happening with the homeless. There's a lot going on with homeless as far as drugs. Drug dealers are using the homeless to promote their business, their drugs. So it's really unfortunate. They also talk about, you know, in the state of California, this is where we have the most, the most homeless because for many different reasons, but it's unfortunately, but we, we have a lot of homeless here in the state of California. And so they continue planning different strategies to really care for them and give them the help they need. And also they talk about the, the importance of emergency preparedness. It's important as a city, we need to prepare for the event of emergency. And also each individual's importance of, you know, having, prepare themselves for the emergency, having their own emergency kit. Something were to happen and we lose water and food supplies for a few days, then what's going to happen? So we need, all, all need to be prepared with an emergency kit, big enough for your family to cover for at least a week. So that's all I wanted to share. Thank you.
I have, I have a report, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Gomez?
Okay. Back in maybe two thousand twelve or two thousand thirteen, the, the school board put together a demographics committee. And what, basically, they use a census information to determine or forecast enrollment sizes in the future. And, you know, depending on what they, they forecast, it determines, you know, staff sizes, class sizes, which can, if they're increased, you know, then you give less individual instruction for the students that, you know, they also could be something to do with what's going on at the school site, which could even be closure, which would be the last thing anybody would want. And fortunately, at that time, they decide, they come to the conclusion that there was no need for any changes. But the reason I brought this up is because it brought to my attention that they're talking about putting together another committee. Now, I, I'll be honest with you, I don't know that if it's just a periodic thing that's done automatically or they're doing it because there's some concerns. But I, I just think maybe it'd be a good idea if we could reach out to the school district and just ask them, you know, you know, what's going on, if they, are there concerns? Because, you know, at least if they do put another committee together, ask somebody from our committee be able to participate so that we can be made aware of what, what's going on. And so, yeah, that's basically it. I just, I just think it's, I don't, I'm not saying that there's something going on, but just saying maybe we should just keep, reach out and touch bases with them, just, just to, you know, keep ourselves abreast of what's, what's happening. We could do that.
Thank you, Councilmember Gomez. I think that's a great idea. Maybe it's something that Ernesto might be able to look into, but I would assume that that the reason they might be doing it is because there is a decline in enrollment in, throughout the state and just people moving out of state and then probably just want to.
And another thing that makes, gets me concerned is around this time, at one of the board meetings, and I don't know what the subject of the conversation came, how it came out, but there was one of the board members mentioned possibly closing one of the schools in our city. And I remember the next school board meeting, former councilman Mariana Rios and her sister, Ogo, who is now on the school board, were at the school board meeting adamantly, you know, speaking that for, that they don't go forward with that idea. And, you know, they were, they were quite upset. So maybe, maybe Ogo might be a good person to talk to because, you know, like I said, she, she advocated for our schools here before.
Yes, definitely. So that's something that Ernesto can look, our city manager can look into.
Definitely, yes.
And it's, it's also important that we're aware of what's going on and that way we don't, you know, provide misinformation and keep our residents informed as well. So thank you very much for bringing that forward. There are no other council reports. I just want to say, we had a, you know, a very successful carnival. There was a lot of community involvement. All three days were very, very busy. You know, also let's, so a lot of, I want to thank all the staff that, that, for putting it together and like I mentioned before, the school district for our partnership and everybody that was involved. There was some minor incidents, but we are taking measures to address those incidents and hopefully collaborate with the school district and some of the other parties so that we can be proactive and see how we can address those, those issues and, and continue to move forward with, with our projects and some of the special events that we have moving forward. So with that said, we did have a closed session item, but it's going to-
Correct, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The item listed on the closed session agenda is going to be continued to a future meeting. Thus, there is no reason to recess into closed session, thus no reportable action, and the council can proceed to the next item on the agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Perfect, thank you. So with that, if there's nothing else, I'd like to adjourn tonight's meeting until the next meeting to be held on Tuesday, April twenty-sixth at 6:00 PM. Thank you and have a good night.